Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of Education for January 27th, 2020. Thank you for your patience. We had a little business to do before we came down, but we're ready to go. So, Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bradford?
Here.
Mrs. Burton?
Here.
Mr. Centers?
Here.
Mrs. Frank?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Johnson?
Here. We have a quorum. And our pledge, Mr. Centers, would you lead us tonight, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you for all coming tonight to our regular meeting of the Board of Education. And for those of you in the audience who want to follow along with our agenda, you can go out the left door and turn to your right, and there are agendas on the table. You'll also find blue slips for anyone who wants to address the board this evening. If you're watching from home, you can go to our website, lavoniapublicschools.org. There's a little bit of a different procedure since we've revamped the website. I think you go to the Board tab, see the Board, and then you can see Board meeting dates, and then you can come down to the agendas, and you should be able to follow along with us. This is our regular meeting, and for those of you who anticipate seeing a lot of discussion and conversation, this probably isn't the meeting that you want to see. Because the items that have come before the Board for a regular meeting and a voting have already been presented to the Board on at least two occasions and possibly even more than that. So there's a lot of discussion before we ever get to this point. If you really want to get into the nitty-gritty and see the discussion, tune into our Committee of the Whole meeting in generally the week before our regular meeting, and that's where you'll see a lot of discussion. We hammer on any of the issues that we may have with the items, and that's why when we get to this meeting, we've already done a pretty good job of vetting all of the questions, and that's why you probably won't hear a whole lot of discussion on it. As I have done, since I've become President of the Board, I like to read our district climate goal before we start our meeting. And that states that all students will experience a positive, safe, and welcoming environment where both students and adults respect and value one another. And we want to set the example for that in the district as a board. And as I always say, we don't always agree on items that come before us, but we spend time discussing it, listening to each other's positions and opinions, and come to a consensus that we can all live with. It's what I call compromise, and I wish we had more of that in our society. We just seem to be so diverse now that we can't sit down and have logical, thoughtful discussions, and I think we need to do more of that. So, we believe that we set the example. We hope that everybody who watches us or comes to our meetings follows that, and anyone who comes before the Board during audience communication, we will give you the utmost respect, and we ask that we be provided that respect as well. There are quite a few things that we have on the agenda tonight that are real good. I mean, there's some things that every now and then we get to celebrate, and tonight are some of those. So we're going to get right into our agenda with communications. And our first item is A, which is our election of officers. Per our Board policy, we have to elect our officers at our first meeting of the year, and that happens to be tonight. So, we're going to jump right into that. So I will, the procedure that we will follow is I will open up the nominations for each of the Board offices. I will take nominations, then if there's any discussion. If not, we will just have a roll call, and those positions will be elected at that time. So, we'll start with, at this point, nominations for President. So I will open up those nominations at this time. Are there any nominations for President?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton.
I will nominate you, Mark Johnson, as President for the upcoming year. One of the most important responsibilities of the President, as it differs from the rest of the Board of Education, is to be a spokesperson for the Board on matters in which the Board has taken action. I feel that you do a superb job at that. It also is a role that does require an extended amount of time above and beyond that of the rest of the Board. And you have been able and willing to put that time into it. You've done a superb job. We generally don't have anyone in that role for longer than about three years, and then you have served for two years in that role. So I would be very happy to have you continue to serve in that role.
Thank you for your kind words, Mrs. Burton. We do not need a support. Are there any other nominations for President? Seeing none, we will close those nominations at this time and ask Mrs. Bonnefield to take your role. We're still getting used to the microphones.
Okay. Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. Thank you for your support. I appreciate it greatly. I will now open up nominations for Vice President.
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonnefield.
I would like to nominate Colleen Burton for the position, please.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Any other discussions? Everybody good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Then I will close the nominations and ask Mrs. Bonnefield to take the role.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. Congratulations, Mrs. Burton.
Thank you.
I will now open up nominations for Secretary.
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bradford.
I'd like to nominate Tammy Bonnefield as the Secretary for the 2020-21 year.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradford. Any other nominations for Secretary? Seeing none, I will close those nominations and ask Mrs. Bonnefield to take the role.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. Congratulations, Mrs. Bonnefield. The last officer that we have is our Treasurer, but our Treasurer is not a member of the Board. So I need a motion at this time to appoint Mrs. Smith.
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton.
Move that Allison Smith, Director of Finance, be appointed Treasurer of the Livonia Public Schools School District until the next annual election of officers.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to appoint Allison Smith as our Treasurer. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. Congratulations, Mrs. Smith. And I will say that, Mrs. Smith, as our Director of Finance and our Treasurer, you bring so much knowledge and support to the Board. We really appreciate everything you do for us, bringing us the budgets, the amendments. We couldn't do what we do without you. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, President Johnson.
All right, and that concludes our election of officers as Item A. I also want to make a note that we will take a short break after Item F. We would normally do it a little bit earlier, but we do have some audience communication that we might want all here. So we will now move to Item B, School Board Recognition Month. Easy for me to say. Mrs. Jenkins?
Thank you. Good evening, President Johnson, members of the Board, Superintendent Oquist. Each January brings a new year and a new opportunity to say thank you to our Board members as we join more than 600 school districts across the state to recognize School Board Recognition Month. As members of the Board of Education, you are among the more than 4,000 elected community volunteers statewide who serve on local school boards and who give freely of your time and talents to benefit students, staff, and the community. Our district is very fortunate to have a group of Board members who take the public trust and responsibility of this role very seriously. As Livonia Public Schools Board members, you dedicate an enormous amount of time to this role, both behind the scenes and publicly. You study the issues, you're inquisitive, you're thoughtful, and you're thorough. In an era of unprecedented choice in education and funding constraints that never seem to end, school boards are charged with charting a course that provides long-term, sustainable success for current and future students. Here in LPS, you are responsible for the oversight of a roughly $150 million budget that provides for approximately 2,000 employees and more than 14,000 students in 23 schools. It's a huge responsibility and one that each of you takes very seriously. We can see your dedication, your enthusiasm, your thoroughness, and your heart. We can see your pride as you visit our schools, as you cheer on our teams, and applaud our students' accomplishments. You care deeply, and it shows. It's that Livonia pride that makes our school district shine, and we're thankful that the Board of Education is a large source of that pride. You, as a Board, have earned the distinction of being named an honorary Board by the Michigan Association of School Boards. For the benefit of the public, this means that each member of the Board is certified by the MASB after many, many hours of MASB coursework. We are so proud of each of you for this accomplishment and for your dedication to LPS and to your role as a Board member. I would now like to read a resolution from the Wayne County Regional Educational Services Service Agency Board of Education. Whereas, the Boards of Education of the 33 constituent school districts of Wayne County promote quality education for all children attending their local schools. And whereas, these committed public servants demonstrate dedication to their civic duty and voluntarily contribute countless hours of service on behalf of the students of Wayne County and their communities. And whereas, Wayne County School Boards are strong advocates for the needs of their students in their communities and with policymakers in Lansing and Washington. And whereas, Wayne County School Boards regularly do all they can to ensure academic success for all Wayne County schools. And whereas, Wayne County School Board members support and participate in both community and school events, volunteering their time and resources. And whereas, Wayne County School Boards understand the importance of a quality education for its youth and recognize this is the most important factor in the success of our local communities, state, and country. And whereas, local control continues to play a vital role in the success of public education. And whereas, the State of Michigan and the State Board of Education have declared January 2020 as School Board Recognition Month. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Wayne County Regional Educational Services Agency Board of Education, in the spirit of School Board Recognition Month, recognizes, celebrates, and commends the dedication, contributions, and leadership of the Wayne County Schools School Boards of Education. This was presented and adopted on January 15th, 2020, and signed by Wayne Reis, Board of Education President James Petrie, and the rest of the Board members. So we have that resolution in your packet. Also included in your packet is a proclamation that was issued by Governor Gretchen Whitmer, declaring that January is School Board Recognition Month. And now I'd like to present each of you with a certificate from yet another agency, the Michigan Association of School Boards. Each year, they present a special certificate to the members of the Boards of Education across the state of Michigan. School Board Recognition Month, January 2020, certificate of appreciation for your dedication to your children and public education in Michigan. to your children and public education in Michigan. And President Johnson, if I may distribute these?
Indeed, thank you.
Thank you. Stacy.
Thank you, Stacy.
That's very nice.
Okay, so before I turn it over to Mrs. Oakwist, who also has a few words, we prepared a special greeting from, for you, from around the district, and we'd like to play a brief video for you now.
Thank you, Livonia Board of Education!
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 Thanks, Livonia School Board!
Thank you, Livonia Board of Education!
Thank you, Livonia Board of Education!
Thank you, Livonia Board of Education!
Thanks, Livonia School Board!
Thank you, Livonia Board of Education!
Thank you, Livonia Board of Education!
Thank you, Livonia Board of Education!
Livonia Public Schools Board of Education!
We're grateful for you! You make us better!
I want to know who wrote the script.
It's very challenging.
Better to keep it simple.
I just want to echo Mrs. Jenkins' comments. You certainly covered so much about what makes our Board of Education special. And just a couple other quick notes. Beyond being an honor board, one of only a handful, a couple dozen in the state across 500 school districts, which took an enormous amount of time, effort, and dedication on the part of our school board members to be trained as thoroughly as they are, that is a great honor for all of us. This board was also selected to be a pilot district, one of only four in the state, to participate in high-impact school governance work. So our team of eight, as we like to call ourselves, our Board Superintendent Team, has gone through the high-impact school governance work and continue that, just in an effort to continue to better our practices each and every day on behalf of the students and staff we serve. And then also just truly the amount of time, effort, and care, and commitment that goes into everything our board does. So we are so very grateful to you, to all of you, but we want to acknowledge that we have two board members who have now achieved 10 years on our school board. And so we would like to take this opportunity to congratulate Vice President Colleen Burton with a special gift. And thank you. And also President Mark Johnson, who has also given 10 years as a member of our Board of Education. We're grateful when you agree to do it for just one term, but the fact that you have come back multiple times, and also this evening, both elected, again, officers of our board, shows how very special you are and all that you've given to our district. This is beautiful. This is beautiful. Thank you so very much. This reads, "To honor your 10 years of service to education," Colleen Burton, Board of Education, and then certainly Mark Johnson, Board of Education. Hopefully yours says Mark Johnson. So once again, we are so grateful for each and every one of you. Thank you.
It's been my honor, and it continues to be my honor. I had a very recent conversation with a fellow board member and said, should we continue on, should we not? And there's pros and cons of this service, but this is the kind of service that's just a passion. And I thank you and I thank our community for allowing us to serve in this manner. Folks have sometimes said, oh, don't you want to do city council or this or that? It's like, ew, no. But our schools, our, my passion, I love doing this. I started off volunteering when my 30-year-old was in preschool, and I'm still around. But I thank you very, very much because it's been a very, it's an honor to serve. It's become a very important part of my life to be able to be involved in our school district in this manner, and I'm honored to serve. Thank you so much for allowing me to do so.
I couldn't have said it better. This is really an honor and a privilege to be able to serve our community, to give something back. I have been here since 1966. I'm a graduate of the Livonia Public School System, as is Colleen. And we find it just unbelievable that we're able to spend the time and give back to our community that gave so much to us. So we appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay. We'll move on to our next item, item 3C, our Points of Pride, Jackson Early Childhood Center. Mrs. Jenkins.
Thank you, President Johnson. As we continue our Points of Pride regular feature, in which we highlight programs and people that reflect our LPS purpose, passion, and our pride, I'm so excited to welcome just a part of the Jackson team who will treat us all to an all-encompassing look at the, our Jackson Early Childhood Center programs and the many programs that are offered to more than 770 of our littlest learners. That is a ton. I just was astounded by that number. That is a lot of little learners. We all know that the Jackson Center holds a special place in thousands of hearts across the community, including myself, including many of us here tonight who have had children enrolled at the center. Tonight, we will hear about the many challenges the programs have undergone through the years, or, I'm sorry, not challenges, changes. This is a very positive presentation. We'll hear about the recent accreditation that took place through Advanced Ed, which was quite an accomplishment in and of itself. We'll hear about the future path to ensure continued growth for our little ones. Without further ado, please help me welcome Mrs. Carol Kerrigan, who is Student Center, Student Services Coordinator, and Mrs. Gail Federonko, Program Supervisor at the Jackson Center.
Thank you so much. You're welcome. Thank you.
Well, good evening, esteemed members of the Board of Education and Mrs. Oakwist. I'm so pleased to be standing here before you this evening to give you an overview of our early childhood programs. I have had the pleasure of serving the district as a Student Services Coordinator for almost nine years, and now overseeing most early childhood programs for the majority of that time. I've seen our programs go through many changes over the time that I've served, but the last two or three years have truly shown the most powerfully positive changes in my tenure. I hope to share these changes and the steps we've taken with you this evening in conjunction with Gail. And as I'm sure you are aware, one of the most recent changes has been our early learning centers were the subject of the district-wide accreditation in November of this school year. This is the first time that our early childhood centers, I'm going the wrong way, I apologize. This is the first time that our early childhood centers have been included in this review process, and we are proud to say that the review went exceedingly well, and we received accreditation from Advanced Ed as a result. Following that formal review process, through ongoing support by Dr. Jennifer Terriell, our Director of Student Services, Mrs. Cindy Scott, our Elementary Director, and Superintendent Oakwist, we have been encouraged to come before you this evening to share details a little bit more deeply about our programs. But obviously, I don't stand here alone this evening. I am proud to serve the families at the Jackson Center with our Program Supervisor, Gail Federonko, at my side. Gail has 18 years of experience in LPS coordinating our fee-based preschool and childcare programs, and her role cannot be underemphasized. She's the brain that makes sense of the programs and helps us truly strive to reach exceptional quality each and every day. In addition, not here with me this evening, but certainly important to mention, is my esteemed colleague Libby Rogowski, who now oversees our GSRP program and our Program for Students with Autism at Roosevelt Elementary. Libby's capacity to seek the best for all students is evident in the continual growth of both the Great Start Readiness Program and the quality of the services provided to our students at the Roosevelt Program for Students with Autism. I am so proud to serve our youngest students with two such high-quality colleagues at my side. So let me give you a little bit of a refresher about the journey of our early childhood programs to date. In December of 1997-98 school year, LPS made the decision to gather our special education preschool programs together under one roof with what at that time was known as MSRP, now known as GSRP. This was, of course, in addition to the programs at the Jackson Center. When larger facilities were needed following the Legacy Initiative, the programs at Perrinville were then moved to the old Adams Elementary School and maintained the name Perrinville Early Childhood Center. During the 14-15 school year, the board made the difficult decision to close Perrinville, and most of the special education programs emerged in the 15-16 school year with the programs at Jackson Center. The preschool program for students with moderate cognitive impairments at that time went back to Webster, and the program for preschool students with autism moved to Roosevelt Elementary. GSRP, the Great Start Readiness Program, was initially integrated into both Rosedale and Garfield Elementaries, but in the 16-17 school year, all the GSRP classrooms came together at what was then Garfield Elementary, where they remain today, though the program is now called the Garfield Community School. Our Young Fives classrooms have spent, had spent the 15-16 school year and the 16-17 school year at Randolph Elementary, and then in the 17-18 school year, they were moved to Hayes Elementary for a single year. It was in that year that we began to have conversations at looking for options to include Young Fives back into the programs at Jackson Center, and this final move for Young Fives happened last year with great relief to all of us, I have to say. In addition, in 17-18, we welcomed our preschool classroom for students with moderate cognitive impairments back to the Jackson Center to complete our family there. Finally, also in the 17-18 school year, we began, as a building, to pilot some options for a few students with IEPs into our existing preschool classrooms at Jackson. We have built upon this inclusive program steadily over the last three years, so that in this current school year, we have 24 spots for students to be included into our general education preschool programs at the Jackson Center. This is really critical. We believe that we are the only district in Michigan that provides this option for our students with IEPs solely out of a fee-based preschool setting, which is unprecedented. And we are very proud of being able to provide these opportunities for our students with disabilities. A few additional facts, some of which Stacy covered already. Across programs at Jackson Center, GSRP and Roosevelt ASD, we have over 770 students enrolled this year, three more this morning. We have a team of well-trained evaluators who provide comprehensive evaluations to over 125 students each year, as those students' parents and their teachers refer them to us. We host an incredibly active PTA at Jackson. Some of you board members started there, I understand. And to date this year, we have over 155 members in the Jackson PTA. We have team leaders in all of our programs for special education who help to support students through implementing interventions where needed, training and supporting staff, and monitoring student data to support student success. Last year, we developed our first school improvement plan, focused primarily on early childhood, and this plan was rolled out at the beginning of this school year. There we go. Our school improvement goals were drafted, keeping long-range planning based on short-term results in mind. We received and continue to receive excellent support from Mrs. Teresa O'Brien, our Chief Academic Officer, as we develop our school improvement team and work towards the goals that you see here. Our focus is, of course, student success in literacy and numeracy, as well as learning the critical self-regulation skills needed to behave and function as a student when each child enters kindergarten. I jokingly said to our principal friends at a meeting, we're trying to help you guys have good starts to the school year. As we, as a result of our feedback from the Advanced Ed visit, we are also forming a curriculum committee to assist in identifying the appropriate curricular components needed to continue to foster our journey of continuous improvement. So now I'd like to turn it over to Gail for a few minutes. She's going to give you some general overview of the programs.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. It's such a thrill to be here. Specifically, I would like to tell you about a few of the programs that we have at Jackson Center. We have a tuition-based preschool program for our three- and four-year-old students. It's developmentally appropriate activity based on programmatic needs. We have various components, including cognitive, art, free play, gross motor, fine motor, music, and social skills with a thematic approach. We also, as Carol has said, have the inclusive preschool, and that's a unique blended program for students with IEPs, as well as typically developing students. It is co-taught by an early childhood special ed teacher and an early childhood teacher as well. We also have the ECP programs that are housed at Jackson Center, and those are play and language-based educational programs for children between the ages of two and a half and five years old with a diagnosed disability and an active IEP. There's a comprehensive team approach, including OT, PT, speech, and language support. And it provides services needed to prepare children with disabilities to enter and succeed in a school setting. We also have the preschool program for students with moderate cognitive impairments, also known as MOCA. That also is a play and language-based educational program for children between the ages of two and a half and five years old who are diagnosed with a moderate cognitive impairment. Also shares the comprehensive team approach, including OT, PT, and speech and language support. And the curriculum includes exposure to early academic skills, as well as learning foundational life skills appropriate to children of a preschool age. And then we have our childcare program. It is a tuition-based program, and it's contracted childcare for children between the ages of eight weeks and five years old. It includes a preschool educational component to meet the needs of the working parents in our community. The instructional programming happens during the traditional preschool hours, followed by enrichment programming for children until 6 o'clock at night. Childcare is available full or part-time, and it runs on a year-round basis. And finally, we have our Young Fives. The Young Fives program is a wonderful program designed for students who are kindergarten-eligible but that require the gift of time to further develop their emotional, social, physical, and/or cognitive skills. The children must be five years old between July 1 and September 1 in order to participate in that program. Parents do have the option of requesting a waiver for enrollment if their child's birthday falls between September 1 and December 1. Young Fives is a tuition-free program, and the children attend five days per week for three-hour sessions in either the morning or afternoon sessions for the traditional school year. Participation in the Young Fives program is by parental choice.
As I mentioned earlier, we also house a program for our students, our little kids with autism at the Roosevelt Elementary School. And this program has really taken flight, I think, over the last few years. The curriculum is based on applied behavior analysis, which is a critical component for teaching young children with autism. And obviously, there's a big focus on the social-relational aspect, which is a difficulty for our little ones. Lots of different communication systems available, our picture exchange communication system, sign language, and other research-based interventions. The commitment of the program is that we understand and believe that all children can learn to speak, which can be a very difficult thing for children with autism. Therefore, the ultimate goal of that program is a very intense, individualized there. Therefore, the ultimate goal of that program is a very intense individualized therapy approach with a really significant focus on the speech and language development. A few years ago, some energetic team members at Roosevelt Elementary, who were gathered in our ASD program and in the general ed classrooms there, under the tutelage of my friend Bill Green back there, decided that it would be a great idea for the kids to start to integrate themselves a little bit at different times of the day as well. So some of our team members created what they call the Cub Club, and this is an opportunity for kindergarten students at Roosevelt to join with our students with autism on Thursdays, playing and learning together. So the students have been instructed in some mini lessons by the special education providers, and at that time, they get to ask all the questions they want to ask in the classroom about what to expect and what to, what to understand about their new friends. And then the children are brought down to the program on a, on a one or two or three children-at-a-time basis, and they just play together. They have a great motor time in the, in the gym, and the goal is really just for the students to meet each other, practice their skills, and, and get to have fun together at the same time. It's a beautiful program that's going on there at Roosevelt. And last, but certainly not least, our Great Start Readiness Program is, as you know, a state-funded grant program that is for our four-year-olds who qualify to successfully begin kindergarten. These students need to show some kind of risk factors, as they might if they were participating, for example, in a Head Start program. And once they are, once they are going through the referral process and they're found that they're eligible for participation in the program. It is a four-full-day-a-week program, Monday through Thursday, from 8:30 to 3:45. Usually, two to three highly qualified teaching staff in the classroom. The classroom teacher-to-student ratio is one, one teacher to every eight children, which is really, really positive for the kids, and they use a state-approved curriculum and assessment tool. It's a great program. So to summarize this evening, I'd like to simply say how gratifying this work is for those of us who are involved in it. We truly view ourselves as the first ambassadors for the district as we prepare our youngest children to journey towards our elementary schools. I also want to state that we are so grateful, so grateful, for the ongoing support of the Board of Education, our Superintendent, Mrs. Oakwist, our engaged cabinet member colleagues, and just for the opportunity to share with you this evening a little bit about our programs. I do have a few, more than a few, staff members here this evening who wanted to be here to show their ongoing commitment to our programs, so if I may, I'd like to ask them to stand and be recognized. Gail and I calculate that's about an eighth. A lot of staff over there. As with all of our programs, without these hard-working folks in the classrooms each day, this work just would not get done. We truly appreciate the support that you all continue to give us, and we are proud to be able to have shared a little bit about our programs with you this evening. Thank you.
Any comments from the Board? Mr. Siders?
First, I just want to thank everyone for coming out. It's amazing to see so many people here taking time out of their evenings, and thank you for the presentation. It was just really informational, really enlightening, and inspiring all the hard work. I previously taught first grade, and you could tell as first graders which students had quality experiences in early education. It really showed up in their preparation in order to read and write, and it's just so important that we get so, as many students as we can in early education, so thank you. You're building the foundation for these students who will spend their careers in LPS, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Siders. Mrs. Bradfield.
I would like to thank everybody for, you guys for coming. So Jackson is where I started my career and why I'm here. The Board of Education was going to close down our daycare program, the childcare program, and I got wind of it, and I stood out in the hallway and passed out flyers and told everybody, and we all came together, and the whole room here was filled with Jackson Center parents, and we asked, "Please don't close our program down." And the Board graciously agreed to do that. There were some changes, but we were able to make it work, and that started me with the PTA, and then where I'm sitting today, and Gail has spent some time with especially my second oldest, Trevor. He spent some time in her office. So I just, I really, I'm so glad to see that the program is, is still going, and, you know, we benefited greatly. Tristan was there when he was 18 months old, and Trevor started there when he was eight weeks old, and both have now graduated from Stevenson High School, and I'm very proud of my boys, and they started off very young with the Livonia Public Schools, and we're so glad that they did.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradfield. Mrs. Bradford?
Thank you, President Johnson. I too started my career off at the Jackson Center with my oldest child, and he's already graduated from college and out in the real world, so I do understand what great programs Jackson Center has. We also participated in the Young Fives program with my youngest, so just wonderful programs over there and great staff. Thank you, staff, for all being here tonight, or many of you. I know it's not everybody, but you represent a great group, and we're really proud of the preschool program and all the programs over at Jackson Center, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradford. Anything else? Mr. Siders?
One thing I forgot is that I'm an alumnus. It's no longer on my resume, but I, so I just want, I forgot to mention.
Wow, that's amazing, Dan. Was the program open then? Oops, sorry about that. Strike that from the record.
Remember, respect.
Excuse me.
Mrs. Frank.
I just wanted to also echo all of my colleagues' comments on, thank you for all that you do. I know that, actually, as Mrs. Jenkins said, there are a lot of challenges to educate these young, young children. They're still babies when they come to you guys, and so, thank you for all that you do for these kids. I know that there's challenges, and it's changing all the time, so there are so many things changing with what's needed, and so we hope that we can continue to change in order to meet your needs and, and the students' needs, because really, what you guys do is the building blocks of the relationship that they have with LPS. And so where you guys plant the seeds for the parents and for the kids determines oftentimes their relationship with LPS. So thank you for what you do and for all the dedication you have. I just have to call out Ms. Bridget, too, because she, you guys are all calling out. She taught Addison, and Addison had a significant speech problem. She's my seven-year-old, and, and we had different speech therapists, and it just wasn't progressing. And Bridget, you did a fantastic job with her. She is doing great at Hoover Elementary, but it was, thank you. It was very frustrating to her, too, because she couldn't get her point across, and so to be able to start kindergarten with being able to communicate made a huge difference to her. So you guys make such a difference in so many kids' lives, so thank you for all that you guys do.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Any, you're not going to tell us you started there.
That would've had to open a long time ago. No, but my daughter Olivia did. She was in their early, early childhood program, and they took amazing care of her. We just want to congratulate all of you on an amazing accreditation process. It was a ton of work, and it was reflective of the amazing things going on at Jackson, at Roosevelt, at Garfield Community School, and it is because each and every one of you and all of your colleagues who are not here tonight, and the leadership that both of you provide. So we are enormously proud, and when you watch that and think about all of those things happen before the kids are five, right? Before our little ones start kindergarten with us, so all of that experience that our families have under your guidance and under your care makes all of the difference in the world, and you build the strongest foundation we could ask for, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwist. Mrs. Burton?
Yes. My kids also were, were there, so we, we did the, the little enrichment classes that kind of dropped in a couple of times a week. It was, the, what I'm excited to see, too, is the variety of offerings over the years and how the offerings have evolved into meeting the needs of our students and of our communities. Super excited to learn tonight about Cub Club. I didn't know about Cub Club. That's, that is just neat, and recently about the Inclusive Preschool class. But it's, it is so exciting with, with an effort toward getting students into the least restrictive environment to utilize avenues such as these in order to get that to, to happen for students on an ongoing basis. And I also wanted to thank the entire staff of our preschool programs for patience, love throughout the last several years when there have been shifts of where we're located. It's easy to say, "Well, we're just going to move here," but it doesn't feel like that. And as being a parent who, whose kids went through Legacy Initiative moves, Marshall Cast moves, other, and we've been, I've had to serve on the board during some school closures, our preschool programs have not been exempt from that. Like the rest of our district, over this last dozen or so years, there have been some moves, and some are minor and some were very significant, but we want to thank all of you for your grace with, with us as Board members, because some of those decisions are really
Difficult.
Difficult and really heart-wrenching, and we know they're hard. It's, it's not just move somewhere. It's significant community change for, for you, for our students, and for day-to-day life, so I want to thank you for the grace that you have afforded our district as we move through these years together and how we try to utilize our resources in the best way we can. It's, it's not, it does not go unnoticed that your patience and your grace through these moves is significant, and I wanted to thank you for that.
That's very nice.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Anything else? Not much I can add to that, but thank you.
Are you ready?
All right, then we'll move on to Item 3D, District Update from the Superintendent. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Oakwist.
Thank you so much, President Johnson. We have some wonderful highlights to share with you this evening, and so we will begin a slideshow. And each month, I have the, the pleasure of sharing many points of pride and just a few snippets and examples from across our district. So first, I'd like to share with you, these are our campers who are part of the Kappa Camp. You remember that snowy Saturday we had a couple of weeks ago? Well, these hearty souls came out and, on January 18th, and the turnout was fantastic, as you can see. Students from across our district are able to select a strand, theater, vocal, or dance, and then they end the day with a performance for their parents. So the camp is led by Kappa Director Angie Hillman and conducted by Kappa students and staff, so congratulations to all of them. Next, we had the pleasure of attending, and I know many of our Board members did as well, the Young Inventors Showcase at Schoolcraft College. Students from three of our middle schools were able to compete in a unique program called the Young Inventors. It's really a collaborative effort between LPS, Alpha USA, Livonia Chamber of Commerce, and Bosch Community Fund, as well as Schoolcraft College. So these students create inventions, and we had, I believe, over 400 middle school students submit ideas for their invention. They are then judged, and these, then 30 students were selected to come to the Young Inventors Showcase. They each got up in front of over 300 people
Wow.
and presented their idea. And so these are students from across the district. At the bottom left are students from Emerson. In the middle are students from Holmes, and on the right are our Young Inventors from Frost. So congratulations to all of them, and their very creative ideas. I think they're, I think Shark Tank is in their future. The PTSA Chili Cook-Off was also on that snowy Saturday. It was a busy day in the district, and I just want to stop and give a shout-out to our amazing crews out there. They started at 10:00 PM on Friday night and worked through the night to get especially our high schools ready, because we were hosting the Chili Cook-Off at Franklin, the Kappa event at Churchill. They, as you know, they are the best around, and we are so grateful that we were able to get in the door and had clear lots to park. So the LPTSA puts on a Chili Cook-Off. There were 12 schools represented. There were 19 different chilis.
I thought there were more than that.
Mr. Oakwist tasted them all.
It seemed like there was more.
Yeah, and Chris Watson was the winner from Holmes Middle School, and the Livonia Quanis Club offered a $500 prize that went to that school's PTA. And so it was wonderful, and so many of our Board members, some of whom you see pictured here, but I know many of our Board members were able to attend on that day. I know they enjoyed that as well, and so congratulations to all involved and to our great PTSA Council. I had the pleasure of attending the Quiz Bowl Tournament a couple of weeks ago. It was held at Franklin, but it involved, I think, nine schools through the KLA, and wow, are these brave, smart, and courageous students. They are so impressive. There were some very obscure questions, and our students acquitted themselves very, very well. So you see our staff involved in being the moderators of, of that, and students go head-to-head in teams of four, and they go through a tournament play, and they really represented LPS so well. So we had two teams from Stevenson, two teams from Franklin, and five teams from Churchill. And so I want to give a shout-out to their coaches, Mr. Barker, Mr. Reyna, and Mr. Coats, who all lead the Quiz Bowl teams. And Churchill had some additional Quiz Bowl success. They won the Wayne State Warrior Classic Tournament this past Saturday, and they defeated a team from Troy that was previously undefeated
Yay!
throughout all of Quiz Bowl season. So a big shout-out to, to our team there. And then we had some, at the Livonia Career Technical Center, we had some video game design finalists. So you see some of those folks pictured here. We had the video game called Traffic Rush by Jerome and Dominic, Defenders of Terra by Ben, Mission Planet by Hamed, The Inventors of Cassett Chan by Matt, Grapple Gallows by Eric, and Flippy Puck by Barack and Jacob.
Where did they get these names?
I'm not sure, but there are games, and you can vote for your favorite. Voting is open through 11:00 PM on February 5th, and the winners will be announced February 6th, and it's quite a lengthy URL. So is that something we could link on our website?
Sure.
Wonderful. Okay. So next, we had the pleasure of seeing Jacob Wright, who's a senior at Franklin and also an Eagle Scout, and a member of the Livonia Career Technical Center Engineering and Design Course, received a Rotary Award for his work at, at the high school, as well as at Livonia Career Technical Center. So he has quite a wonderful future ahead of him. I know he's headed to Lawrence Tech, and we were very pleased to honor Jacob last month at Rotary. So next, we had high school teams, high school DECA teams from across the district, and I know at one of our schools, I believe it was Franklin, that we had 20 students moving on to the next phase of the DECA competition, but we had proud members from all three of our high schools at Eastern Michigan University. These are the regionals, and then they move on to state competition, and then hopefully some, as we usually have international competition. Our bowling teams are on a roll.
Nice.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that we got that. So it is, it has been great. I was able to watch our teams compete a couple of weeks ago over at Mary Bowl, who has been a great host for our students. It's been exciting to watch their success, so kudos to the Franklin Varsity team. They made a splash at the recent Wald Lake Eliminator Tournament, where they qualified first, advanced to the Final Four, and finished second to a very tough Waterford-Cuttering team. The coach said this was their toughest challenge to date, and certainly the other teams now know Livonia Franklin is on the map. So all of our teams have had really a great start to the season. It is wonderful to watch them when they're here at home. I'd encourage you to stop by and visit. We had preview nights, high school preview nights. I want to thank each of our staffs and teams at the high schools. So all of our high schools had freshman orientation or the incoming night where they welcomed our freshman students at each of the high schools. It's a great night for our high schools to shine and an exciting night for our eighth graders as they imagine what their future will be. We had two students last, last week or the week prior, who were both up for Prep Athlete of the Week for the entire hometown life of the Week for the entire Hometown Life region. We had Seth Laus, who is captain of Stevenson Hockey Team, and we had Ian Wright, who is a freshman bowler, who in practice a few weeks ago bowled a three hundred. And also recently led his team to win the Mark Voit Memorial Tournament. So Seth did something that we think might be only the second time that this has ever happened, but he scored a hat trick, shorthanded all three times in our, in his, in the game against Heartland. So three shorthanded goals and he won the Hometown Life Athlete of the Week, Seth Laus. Stevenson Hockey also hosted a sock toss. This is their second annual. Some of you may have heard of York Project. So Josh York is an alum of LPS and he started a company called the York Project and they design socially conscious streetwear. If you haven't checked out the York Project, I'd encourage you to do so. He's an amazing young man and is certainly dedicated, his company, to helping the homeless and to being part of helping others less fortunate. And so they had a sock toss after the first goal of the Stevenson Hockey Game the other night and collected many, many pairs of new socks that they will add to part of their donation kit that they give out each month to the homeless. Next, we have many, many schools participating. Students at Grant and Hayes Elementary donated funds in exchange for bringing their favorite stuffed animals to school for a day. The funds were donated to the brush fire relief efforts in Australia. Both schools raised almost six hundred dollars. Meanwhile, students at Johnson are collecting funds for Australia as well. They can pay one dollar for a postcard, which they color and display at the school. So we know oftentimes many of our schools are, one of the things the students say first is, "How can we help?" And we love to support that altruistic sense that they have, so congratulations to each of those schools. So you know, we always like to promote what's coming. So we have the Curious Incident of the Dog in the Nighttime. Kappa will be performing four different performances in just a couple of weeks, the fourteenth to the sixteenth. Tickets are available online. And then Annie is coming to Franklin, so the Franklin players will be presenting Annie on the third weekend in March. And I think there will be five performances for Annie. So mark your calendars. And then finally, we have a few great things coming up this week. We have Reflection Celebration on Thursday night. So thanks to the over two hundred students who participated in the Reflections Competition. Mrs. Jarvis is normally our emcee. Are you in that role again this year?
Yeah, I think I might be doing it.
Okay. So that's being held this Thursday. We have a solo and ensemble competition hosted at Franklin also this Saturday. And then the middle school will be hosted on February eighth. Our Founder's Day Celebration, which is a great event, over usually four or five hundred members of our PTA and of our Livonia public school staff come together on February twelfth. It's usually a snowy night.
Yes.
That's something we all note and so that's coming up shortly. And then finally, just a reminder that we have a kindergarten registration Saturday event. That's been very popular. You can sign up online. That will be held February twenty-second at Riley Upper Elementary School. So as always, our LPS pride shines brightly.
Yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwest.
Love the slideshow. What a great...
I think we really enjoy the slideshow, the visuals. That really is nice. Thank you for doing that.
Absolutely. Thank you to my friend, Mrs. Jenkins, who's a great partner. Thank you.
That'll take us to item three E, Written Communications. Are there any written communications? I don't believe so. And then that takes us to item F, Audience Communication. This is the time of the meeting when the community speaks and the board listens. I would remind you that the, the board has three, three roles. One is to hire and evaluate the superintendent. The second is to create policy and the third is to align our budget to our long-term district goals. If your issue that you're speaking about relates to any one of those three items, then you can expect if there is a response required from the board. If it falls outside of that or what we call the day-to-day operations of the district, then that response would come from the administration. I would remind you that per our board policy, the, each speaker has three minutes. Mrs. Monifield, generally...
Yeah, it's been a while.
Is our, it has been a while. Is our, our timekeeper. She will start when you start to speak and there will be a, a bit of a ding or a tone. We think that's a little more, it's a little less overbearing than me pounding on the gavel to make you stop. But when you do get to that, we would ask that you wrap up your, your comments so that we can move on. It's, you know, some people say, "Well, if there's only one speaker and we typically allot fifteen minutes, why can't I talk longer?" It's because it's, it's a matter of fairness. People who come, just happen to come on a night there's only one or two speakers, it would be unfair for, to give them more time than someone who comes in when there are five or six speakers. So please adhere to the, to the three minutes, if you would. And I do have two blue slips tonight and the first one is from Livonia Robotics. And we've seen you before.
Welcome back.
Thanks for coming.
Hi, my name's Aaron Robinson. I am a senior at Churchill High School. And with me are three of the captains for the Livonia Warriors and the Tyrus Team. We'd like to introduce the new game for this First Robotics Competition. It's called Infinite Recharge. There's a good article, it's a summary of it, on the Points of Pride section of the LPS website that you can look at if you want to know more.
I'm Aiden Rudy. I'm a junior at Franklin High School. In Infinite Recharge, two alliances work to protect First City from approaching asteroids caused by distant, by distant space skirmish. Each alliance, along with their trusty droids, race the clock and score power cells in order to energize their shield generator for maximum protection. To activate stages of the shield generator, droids must manipulate their control panels after scoring a specific number of power cells. Near the end of the match, droids race to the rendezvous point to get their shield generator operational in order to protect the city.
Hi, I'm Michael Snyder from Stevenson High School. I'm a senior. I wanted to tell you about our Week Zero competition. Our field builders have been busy working, this includes Mr. Jarvis and my father, to build a full-sized field so we can host our Week Zero event. Week Zero will be at Dickinson Saturday, February twenty-second and we are inviting everyone, all teams around to come and join us in our scrimmage.
Hi, I'm Lainey Hart. I'm a junior at Stevenson High School. Our first competition for both teams will be at Belleville High School on Friday, March seventeenth and Saturday, March eighteenth. The competition that we host at Churchill High School will be on Friday, March twenty-seventh and Saturday, March twenty-eighth. Everyone is invited to attend and we hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you for, for coming and give us an update. We, we always love to hear from the robotics. Thank you. I have a, actually I have now a third blue slip, but the second is Leroy Williams.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me just a couple of minutes and I promise I won't get the gavel. It's, I first want to just congratulate you all on being re-elected and it sounds like you guys have gotten an esteemed group of board members, so congratulations to you all. My name is Leroy Williams and I'm with a company called Industry Specific Staffing and what we do is we provide substitutes to a number of school districts, public and charter schools. And in most of our public schools, we don't compete because we know that in most cases school districts have their primary substitute company. And so what we do is we try to augment that. So we're very comfortable in a secondary role. So what we say is, just think about this. What happens when, you know, and this happens every day, some teachers, for whatever reason, they call in sick or something happens and the primary is in most cases able to do a pretty good job, but they're not able to do a hundred percent of a capture of substitutes in order to fulfill what's needed for the day. The question is, what happens? What does a school do when that happens? And when you think about that, there's a, you know, in most cases, there's a few solutions. None of them are great. In some cases, after the first or the primary is exhausted, their substitutes, sometimes maybe we have to take a prep hour. Sometimes classes are combined. In some cases, you know, maybe kids are put in different classes to maybe expand the number of students in some classrooms. And none of those are great options. So what we do is we become that second solution. Now certainly you've thought about, and most school districts have thought about, you know, we hire our own school building subs, then we hire, you know, a primary. But what happens after that is exhausted? And that's where we come in. So this is a little bit different than what, you know, maybe some of the primaries are offering and we are not competing against them. We actually augment what they do. Some of the questions that first come to mind is, well, if they're using substitutes, aren't you using the same pool? No, we don't. We use, not in all cases, a hundred percent different pool. We have our, a pool that we, that we use for charters and other public school districts. Our subs go all around. We have people that are working right now. They're calling subs. They're getting subs into schools for tomorrow. So we are a staffing company that does even more than what your current school, school sub company does. So what I'm here to do is to introduce ourselves to you, introduce the idea to you guys and certainly, as you indicated during your, as you indicated during the, the opening, the administration, I'm looking for the administration to return a call. So that's the end of my presentation, obviously. But I do thank you again. Congratulations on being re-elected and I would hope to get a, a return phone call and I certainly have some information I can give to whomever at this, uh, thank you. Thank you so much.
Appreciate you coming in. The third is Katie Regwitz. Regwitz. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you? I'm a Livonia resident. I've lived here for about four years. LPS parent for three children. I did have a couple of concerns. I, if someone can get back with me, that's fine. I'm just kind of starting at the bottom, working my way up here. Had a couple of issues about safety and I'm just wondering why someone, you know, in just the past year, I've had three personal issues with safety at Livonia Public Schools and events. And I don't feel like anyone at the office, at the administration building has helped me, given me any reassurance that my children are safe, as are other people's children. First instance was somebody walking into Stevenson High School to assault a friend of mine's child. What was very disappointing was the fact that my ex-boyfriend at the time was a school resource officer and that on his watch, someone was able to get into the school to do that to that child. He didn't like the fact that I questioned him and I held him accountable for how that would happen. I also found out that he was not held responsible for that either with the police department or the school district. Me and my sons were at a Stevenson High School hockey game over the holiday. We were accosted by a Stevenson High School teacher as the name of Natalie Goble. She accosted us, swore in front of us, frightened me and my children. Livonia Police would not do anything, as she is the girlfriend of one of their officers. I'm just really concerned that my friend who was, let me take her child to that hockey game, he would also witnessed the verbal assault by the teacher. He was also assaulted at school last week and he had three broken teeth. So I'm just, as a parent, I'm concerned as to why this, the type of behavior I've seen of a teacher perpetuating bullying, the violence in the schools, why it's considered an HR issue and not a public safety issue for parents and their students that trust that when our children are going to school or to a school event, a school sanctioned event, that they will not be accosted by a teacher, bullied by a teacher or another student or have sustained such injuries as the Stevenson High School student and the student that goes to school with my son at Riley experienced. So like I said, I'm, I'm a parent that I put, I put safety first and if, and if Livonia, no matter how good of a job you guys do educating our children, if they're not safe, it's not good enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. All right. I do not have any other blue slips, so as I indicated earlier, we're going to take a short break at this point, but we will be back in about five to ten. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we're back, so we'll move on with our agenda. Item 3G, response to prior audience communication. I do not have any, does, uh, any of the board members?
No.
Seeing none, we're going to move on then to, um, item four, our consent agenda.
There we go.
May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Frank.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent to particip- Nope, I like. Oh, hold on. No, that's, yeah. Right down the left. Click on the ribbon. My computer is down, so I'm using Liz's. One moment, please.
Technology.
Technical difficulty. This is what happens, you guys, when you use technology. We used to have it printed out, and it went much smoother.
What's wrong with Liz's?
Okay. Here you go. Great. Do you have it print out?
Yep.
Thanks. Because it's not on Liz's either.
This moment of silence is brought to you by-
You'll have your computer back.
Thank you. Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District approve the following consent agenda items as recommended by the superintendent. 5A, minutes of the regular meeting of December 16th, 2019. 5B, minutes of the special meeting of December 16th, 2019. 5C, minutes of the closed session of December 16th, 2019. 5D, minutes of the special meeting of January 21st, 2020. 5E, minutes of the closed session of January 21st, 2020.
Support.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Are there any questions, comments on this item?
Thank you, Jill.
Seeing none, uh, Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. That takes us to item six, our instruction matters, and item A, limited, uh, limited out, out of district schools of choice for 2021. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that, move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent to participate in limited schools of choice under sections 105 and 105C for the 20, 2020-21 school year. Openings to include no more than 185 seats in kindergarten through eighth grade, and five seats in each Global Ed and Kappa at ninth grade only, for a total of up to 195 students.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Burton and Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, President Johnson. Since the 2014-2015 school year, uh, Livonia Public Schools has participated in the 105 and 105C School of Choice program. Uh, with our recommendation for the 2020 and 2021 school year, uh, we can generate approximately $1.5 million in additional revenue if all of these seats are filled. This will help us to preserve programs that are essential to the students of Livonia Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Frank?
Um, President Johnson, I just wanted to touch base. I know that I have exhausted this in terms of our, um, um, committee of the whole, as well as our study session, I've asked this question, so I'm just going to summarize because I did get it again on Thursday night at open house, why we do this, and I think that it's important for the staff to know, we also, we bring in funds for this, but we also are able to fill gaps in the, in the, um, in the district. And Mrs. Oquist or Mrs., Mr. McDonald, you could probably speak to it better in terms of how we can alleviate split classrooms, we can fill classes as opposed to overflow students, um, to different elementary schools, because we don't lose, um, we have, we still have declining enrollment, so we don't lose students out of one high school, we lose them out of all three high schools, and not out of one grade out of that high school. So, um, so that's why we do this. It's not only for the funds that we receive, but it's also to help mitigate the student loss that we have year over year, just because of the decline, declining enrollment and the decline in student, uh, births. It's not that kids are always going other places, it's just that there's less students to educate than there were in the past. Is that correct?
Yes, that's very well said.
Okay. Just so, just so in case there's any other, um, parents out there that are wondering why we continue to do this, I think that it's important for them to know.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Mrs. Oquist?
I'll also mention, I think it would be helpful if, um, folks did have questions about this, um, that the committee meeting, we did have some extended discussion, and I think it would certainly be helpful, certainly they're welcome to contact myself or Mr. McDonald if they'd like to, um, have any questions answered, um, but I also think it's helpful to hear the board's conversation and questions, um, that we've had on this topic, um, at the last committee meeting, which I think would be very helpful.
Thank you, Mrs. Oquist. Any other questions, comments? Uh, Mr. Centers?
Uh, so just, um, this is something I think in choice that, uh, has been around for a couple decades now, and at one time was quite rare, and now it's quite rare when districts, uh, do not have any choice of, for out of districts students. So, um, you know, this is something that, uh, with the, the choice environment in Michigan, this is something that, uh, is very, very common, and, uh, you know, for our district, we've seen, uh, a lot of students come in and have great experiences, and, uh, you know, from the reports we've heard, they, they do quite well in our district. So, uh, you know, many years ago, when I, we started this, uh, you know, we had lots of questions, but, uh, so far, things have gone, uh, very well. So, uh, you know, a lot of that is to do with, uh, our staff and, um, administrators and cabinet, and everyone making sure that students coming into our district are, um, brought up to speed and, uh, understand, uh, the curriculum and our, our norms here in LPS, and, uh, you know, everyone, please keep up the great work.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Burton?
Uh, one of the requirements for schools of choice is that the student's family provides the, the transportation, and that's throughout the whole process, that they are an out of district school of choice student.
That is, that's correct.
And then if, uh, if a family is to move into the district, uh, and we do find that that happens fairly frequently, uh, the family may live out of the district for a period of time, they move into the district, you know, a few years after the child is, is schools of choice, they're no longer considered schools of choice, then they would be eligible for transportation in whatever, uh, to whatever degree, it, they wouldn't be offered transportation based on where their home is located.
That's correct, so they're not guaranteed transportation, it's dependent upon-
Right.
-you know, their, um, their location, how close they are to-
Of their home.
-elementary or middle or high school.
Okay, okay. And one of the questions that I always get, and we discussed it at committee of the whole, but I would still like you to, uh, address it, whoever would like to, one of our cabinet members or, or Mrs. Oquist, uh, is discipline situations with students. Now, from what I understand, right off the bat, a lot of discipline, eh, eh, situations don't even come in the door, because there's got to be a, of, because of the transportation requirement. These are students that have parents or grandparents who are able and willing to invest the time to transport their student daily. Uh, therefore, there's, there's a large degree of family support right off the bat. And from what I understand, we don't have a lot of discipline situations that, that come in with, uh, with our out of district school of choice. But can you, can either Mrs. Oquist or Mr. McDonald, somebody else, uh, address that for-
Pardon me?
-our community?
Uh, so what we see is that our discipline patterns are very similar to those of our Livonia Public Schools boundary students. So you may have a student or two that have a high rate of discipline, but generally speaking, you have just as many, or you have way more, who may have absolutely no discipline at all. So some, a similar pattern that you would see with any of our students.
Okay. And for those who weren't observing the committee of the whole, I mean, we broke it down statistically last week and, and looked at, at numbers, and they were almost identical to what our, our, like you said, in boundary Livonia Public Schools students-
Yeah.
-were experiencing. Um, like I say, all of our students are little angels all the time, but sometimes, even though, even if we adults misstep, and so do they. Um, once a student, uh, comes into the school district, uh, again, just so the, the public understands, uh, if they are coming into the school district as a, as now, as an out of district schools of choice, they will be able to stay in the district to their graduation, provided that they do not leave the district. Like, they can't take a year off break and then, and come back in. If they wanted to come back in, they would have to apply to come back in-
That is correct.
-if we were taking students at that year and at that grade.
That is correct.
Okay. Um, and when is the window that, uh, they can apply?
We would be looking to have a window from March 2nd to March 31st as the application window, um, and then we'd follow that up with lottery if need be, and we anticipate that it would be on, on April 3rd, I believe that's the Friday.
Okay. And this, uh, motion authorizes up to 195 students maximum.
Correct.
What we have seen is approximately two-thirds or so of, of the number that we authorize actually, uh, results in students who apply, are accepted, and then actually do register and begin school with us on September, whatever.
Yes, the other piece to that, the other piece to that equation would be actual seats. So we, we say up to 195, but we don't know fully right now what, what we're going to have available in each grade or each building. So that gives us the ability to go up to 195, but we may not have enough seats to go up that high as well.
Right. But even if, if this is approved tonight, in all likelihood, we will not have 195 students in September. We would-
Correct.
-probably more realistically looking, be looking somewhere in the hu, two-thirds of that number-ish.
Correct.
If, if history repeats itself as it has in the last few years.
Yes, historically speaking, that would be correct.
Okay, all righty. That's all the questions or comments I had. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Burton, uh, to accept the limited out of district schools of choice for, uh, 2020 and 2021. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, President Johnson?
Yes, the motion carries. That takes us to item 6B, approval to purchase calculators for secondary schools. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Bradford.
Move that the Board of Education approve the recommendation to purchase Texas Instruments TI-84 Plus calculators for our secondary schools. The total cost to purchase 360 calculators to provide each of the middle and high school math departments with 60 new calculators is $52,872.84.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Centers, and I think Mrs. O'Brien's going to help us with this.
I will, thank you, President Johnson.
Good evening.
These calculators that we are purchasing, we will be, um, providing each math department at our middle schools and our high schools with 60 new calculators. They come in sets of 10 with a charging station. They will allow teachers to, um, share more easily in those sets of 10s, students to check them out and use them during class. And then also for our math departments to look at the calculators they currently have and make sure, um, students are provided with the graphing calculators they need for the courses that they need. Um, the funds for this purchase is the instructional materials portion of our 2013 bond.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. Questions from the board? Mrs. Burton?
Just for clarity, this is 60 calculators at each of our three high schools and our, our three middle schools, so we're looking at a total of 360 calculators. Got it? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion- Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mr. Centers for the approval to purchase calculators for secondary schools. Mrs. Bonifield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonifield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. That takes us now to item six C, approval of district professional development committee. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bonifield?
Move that the Board of Education approve the creating of a district-wide advisory committee to provide direction and feedback on district provided professional development. The committee will be comprised of teachers, staff, parents, and administrators.
Support.
Stereo. We have a motion by Mrs. Bonifield, supported by Mrs. Frank. And Mrs. O'Brien, again, help us with this.
Yes, thank you. The approval of this district professional development committee would allow my department and our administrators to work with a group of teachers, staff, and parents. And it would give us opportunity to gather feedback and plan for professional development at the district level. The school code was changed last fall, and one of the changes was to allow professional development hours to count as student hours. And the creation of this committee would allow us to take advantage of that flexibility in the law. We would be looking to have our first committee meeting next month and to begin to create this committee and utilize them to plan for the rest of this year and the beginning of next year's professional development days.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. Questions from the board? Mrs. Frank?
I just wanted to say I'm really excited about this. I think professional development is such a great thing that our staff can benefit from and that to make our, our days more effective and even more in terms of meeting what their needs as, as education continues to change. So I think this is a really exciting thing to do to involve so many people with the planning of it. So thank you for doing this.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Other questions or comments? Just to clarify, Mrs. O'Brien, what we're voting on is simply to create the committee, not to approve committee members. Is that right?
Correct. The creation of the committee. A board-approved creation of the committee.
Right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonifield, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the approval of district professional development committee. Mrs. Bonifield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bonifield says yes. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
And President Johnson?
Yes, the motion carries. That takes us now to item seven, and seven A is adoption of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty second budget amendment. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton?
Move that the Board of Education of the Levonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached second amended budgets for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. General Fund, Funded Projects Fund, Special Education Fund, Food Service Fund, Health and Welfare Fund, Debt Retirement Funds, two thousand thirteen bond series one, two thousand thirteen bond series two, two thousand fourteen refunding bond, Scholarship Fund, two thousand thirteen bond fund, Capital Projects Funds, Sinking Fund, Technology Fund, Capital Projects Fund, and School Activities Fund.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mrs. Smith?
Thank you, President Johnson, and thank you to the board for the opportunity to go over with you in detail at our committee meeting last week, each one of the funds and the proposed changes to those funds. Just as a general reminder, I'll give some of the highlights from our general fund. As you know, we adopted our budget back in June before we had a lot of our figures finalized. For instance, didn't know what the enrollment was, the state hadn't passed their budget yet. So come October, we did do a budget amendment because we had additional information at hand. But during the October amendment, we still didn't do the same level of analysis that we do for a typical budget amendment. So that was done for the budget amendment before the board this evening. As a result of that, I'm happy to report we had some positive revenue adjustments to the general fund to the tune of two point two million dollars. And that comes through various state aid adjustments, also a increase in the collection of delinquent Wayne County enhancement millage taxes, also a additional reimbursement of our special education costs from Wayne RISA, some facility usage increases in collection, and then also some miscellaneous adjustments to the tune of two point two million dollar positive adjustment to our revenue. We also had some additional expenditures on the general fund that we were recommending for approval, roughly four hundred thousand dollar increase to our transportation equipment line specifically for a recommended bus purchase, which we'll be talking about next. Also, an adjustment of two hundred and forty-one thousand as a result of our open enrollment. We had made a commitment in October to increase the district's employer contribution for health insurance costs. And the estimate that we came up with at that time was based on our current census of employees taking our insurance. And as a result of the open enrollment, we've had a few more people join our, join the insurance pool. And so with that, we have a need to designate some additional dollars to cover those insurance contributions. And then last but not least, we had just some miscellaneous revenue adjustments that net to about forty-six thousand dollar decrease. So overall revenue expenditure adjustment of six hundred thousand dollars. So if approved and by the board tonight, we are projecting an ending fund balance for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year of twenty-nine point four million dollars or eighteen point three percent, which puts us right in the middle of the Michigan School Business Officials' recommendation of a fifteen to twenty percent fund balance.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Questions or comments from the board? The only comment, Mrs. Burton?
Occasionally, we're asked why we need to carry a fund balance of fifteen to twenty percent. This board has discussed it many, many times. For the public, will you, or Mrs. Oquist, whichever one of you would like to address that, answer that for the folks who are listening at home?
Sure, I would be happy to. First off, from a cash flow perspective, this allows the district not to have to borrow funds to get us through certain low periods. Our biggest source of revenue is from our state aid payments, and the state closes their books as of September thirtieth. And I think to aid that process, they don't make a state aid payment in the month of September. Well, as you know, our staff have returned by then, we've done our first payrolls for the pay. So we have to have enough money to get us through the month of September without receiving a state aid payment, but yet we've started to pay our staff. So that's definitely one of the biggest things in my mind is from cash flow perspective. As I know, many of you know too, we have fluctuations in our funding, and sometimes that comes to us mid-year. Without a fund balance, we would have no ability to kind of weather that, those changes, and it would mean making sometimes drastic changes in our programming mid-year. So having a fund balance allows us to adjust to things such as changes in enrollment, maybe the, the number of students didn't come in as projected. Again, we, from the legislators, are kind of at the will of what they've approved. We saw not that long ago, within the last ten years, you know, an over four hundred dollar per pupil cut that happened mid-year. Without a fund balance to weather that, that would be devastating for our district. Also, the ability, again, not to mention to about the cash flow, that means also we don't have to borrow, so we have savings. Because when you do borrow money, obviously, they're not loaning it to us for free, so we incur interest costs. So we're avoiding, avoiding interest costs. Another big benefit too is when the district goes to maybe pass a bond for some of our capital improvement projects, a fund balance is looked at favorably by investors and results in a higher ratings, which means we get better interest rates on any bonds that we sell. So variety of reasons, but those are just a few of the highlights.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford, to adopt the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty second budget amendment. Mrs. Bonifield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Sorry?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonifield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. That takes us to item seven B, approval to purchase buses. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Levonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of twenty-two seventy-seven passenger buses through the Michigan School Business Officials' Bus Purchasing Program at a total cost not to exceed two million two hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Center, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, and Mrs. Smith again.
Thank you very much. The district maintains a fleet of roughly one hundred and ten school buses. We've had the opportunity through our two thousand thirteen bond to replace sixty-six of those buses. We've also had the opportunity through our general fund and through some grant funds to replace a number of buses through the last few years, but that still leaves twenty-three of our buses that are over ten years old. And so what we're recommending is specifically our model year two thousand and seven buses, replacing those. And we bring forth this recommendation in light of the fact that we have been awarded a grant that we sought out, that's being offered through the state of Michigan and including a partnership with the State of Michigan Volkswagen Trust. And we've been awarded this grant that will help us and reimburse us for forty percent of the cost of these buses. So while the total cost is two point two million dollars, roughly eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars will be reimbursed to us from this grant opportunity. So we're very excited. A lot of research has been done by our fleet supervisor, as well as our transportation supervisor, and we're very confident in the recommendation we bring before you and are very excited to have these buses updated.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Questions or comments from the board? And Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. Mrs. Smith, after this is approved and the buses have been purchased, out of the hundred and ten buses in our fleet, how many older buses will we have left?
That will leave one bus that's a two thousand and eight that didn't qualify for this grant in our fleet. And we're very hopeful that this particular grant will be reopened next year. Each year, they change the requirements or the criteria that would qualify for the grant. So we're feeling pretty confident that that last bus will be able to be, well, at least will apply for the grant to see if they'll help us with that replacement. But that would then leave our second oldest buses at two thousand and thirteen during our first year. The two thousand and thirteen bond once that passed, we did purchase those buses. So on that, only one bus that's just over ten years old.
One lone bus. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Mrs. Bonifield?
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. A couple of things that I wanted to maybe point out, I believe this, we pulled the purchase, purchase of these buses ahead just a little more than we had expected because we were able to get this grant. And another reason why it's great to have a fund balance out there, so that we can, you know, juggle things around a little bit and really take advantage of this grant. And then I, I think the way we got the grant was pretty amazing, and we had some good conversation. Can, can you guys, either Mrs. Oquist or Mrs., just how we wound up getting the grant and who exactly, you know, I think we're very, we're very grateful to all of our staff, and this is a particularly special, I think, little story that deserves to be told.
Sure. So we had a number of members of our team, Mr. Rick Martin, who is our fleet supervisor and our garage supervisor, who does a tremendous job overseeing our large fleet of maintenance vehicles and buses, Mrs. Peggy Struffin, who is our transportation supervisor, Ms. Crystal Hicks, who is a member of, an accounting supervisor in our finance department, and who am I missing?
Nope, that was the main three.
The main three. And then, of course, both Mr. Francis and Mrs. Smith assist as both part of operations and finance. So they did a tremendous amount of research and work writing this grant, and to obtain a grant for almost eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars is very significant. It certainly has allowed us to accelerate the replacement of these buses and bring to, bring the numbers, as Mrs. Jarvis asked, down to just one bus that will be beyond the ten year mark as far as age. So we are very grateful for their hard work. They did a tremendous amount of research into these buses and into the grant, and we are the beneficiary of their hard work and ingenuity.
Thank you, Mrs. Oquist. Anything else, Mrs. Frank? Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, for the approval to purchase buses. Mrs. Bonifield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonifield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, the motion carries. That takes us to item seven C, approval to select design firm for central office renovation. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Move that the Board of Education of the Levonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation from the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to appoint HED as the design firm for programming and assessment services related to work at the central office building for a cost not to exceed forty-six thousand dollars.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank, and Mrs. Smith again.
Thank you, President Johnson. It's my privilege to bring this recommendation to the board. As you know, we've been able to do amazing things through the two thousand and thirteen bond at our schools. And as we look to our administration building, you know, we've started to make some improvements here on the lower level, but by and large, the building has seen not much as far as changes over the last forty-plus years as even some pictures would, would illustrate. Wanting to be judicious with the funds that we spent and be very strategic with how we, what we do here, we thought it best to engage an expert in office space design to come in and take a look at our space, to meet with the staff and identify some needs if we were to do an improvement here. So this is exactly what this contract with the architectural firm, HED, would do. They would come in, evaluate what the needs are for this building, and then come up with a program of design to meet some of the needs here. One thing I would like to point out is no bond funds or sinking fund dollars would be used for this project if we do decide to proceed. We are looking to use funds that are in the Capital Projects Fund, which were a result of some one-time revenues. Sale of properties would go into this fund. So what, again, this recommendation is for you tonight is to engage an architectural firm to do some design work for us here at the administration building to come up with some ideas that we could evaluate to see if we want to move forward with.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the approval to select design firm for central office renovation. Mrs. Bonifield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonifield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries.
Thank you.
That takes us to item seven D, approval of twenty-twenty roofing projects. May I have a motion?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Frank?
Move that the Board of Education of the Levonia Public Schools School District approve the recommendation of the owner's representative, Plant Moran Cressa, to award the contract for roofing replacements at Emerson Middle School and Levonia Career Technical Center in the amount of two million three hundred and thirty-nine thousand one hundred dollars to Royal Roofing Lake Orion, Michigan, and the contract for roofing replacement at Rosedale Elementary School in the amount of five hundred and ten thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars to Quality Roofing Whitmore Lake, Michigan, plus contingency in the amount of two hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-seven dollars for a total cost, for a total project cost of three million seventy-seven thousand four hundred and twenty dollars and authorize a superintendent or her designee to negotiate and execute final contract.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Centers, and I think, Mr. Frank, this is going to help us.
Yes, sir, thank you. As you know, we have a ten-year project plan with regard to roofs, boilers, and paving of the sinking fund. This is a planned project for the summer of two thousand and twenty, and these roofs of two thousand twenty, and these roofs will be fully torn off and replaced over the summer. We do have two different firms that are being recommended, Emerson Middle School being a large project as far as square footage, and Rosedale and the Livonia Career Technical Center, smaller square footage sizes. And we recommend both of these vendors, along with the eight percent contingency, in order to complete the two thousand twenty roofing replacement projects.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank. Who's supported? Mr. Centers, supported by Mr. Centers for the approval of the twenty-twenty roofing projects. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Sorry. Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That takes us to item seven E, approval to purchase high school fieldhouse curtain dividers. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Bradford.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of fieldhouse curtain dividers at Churchill High School, Franklin High School, and Stevenson High School from C and M Associates LLC, Livonia, Michigan, in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars for the installation of six curtains, plus twelve thousand dollar contingency, for a total approved amount of fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, and again, Mr. Francis will help us with this.
Yes, thank you. The three fieldhouses at the three high schools were built in the very early two thousands. The six dividing curtains that are in the fieldhouses, two in each divided the three courts, are all the original curtains. They've lasted us eighteen years approximately and are in poor condition. So this would be a replacement of those curtains. We had conversations at the committee of the whole with the board regarding the hardware and the motors. Those were inspected, and we do believe them to be in good condition. However, as a safety net, and in order to continue the work, if something does happen to be found to be wrong with something, I do have that contingency in there in case we find that hardware or motor needs to be repaired or replaced. But per our inspection, going into the investigation portion of getting ready for this project, it is our belief and our understanding from the inspections that that hardware and motors are in good condition. But as opposed to halting work and coming back to the board for an extension of an approved amount, we had put in the contingency, which hopefully, if all goes as planned, we'll just be returning back to the sinking fund.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. Questions or comments from the board? Thank you for getting that additional information.
Oh, you're welcome.
Through the questions that we ask of the committee in the whole meeting. We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to approve the purchase of high school fieldhouse curtain dividers. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. That takes us to item seven F, approval to purchase carpet for shared time in adult education. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of carpet replacement at CAS, Shared Time and Adult Education, from Schach Brothers Floor Covering, Roseville, Michigan, in the amount of thirty thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, plus three thousand dollar contingency, for a total approved amount of thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Frank, and again, we'll hear from Mr. Francis.
Yes, thank you. The, this purchase, or I should say, this carpet replacement is replacing a worn-out carpet that is original to the building in the small circle. We do have our Livonia Public Schools programs that are housed there, that would be adult education, adult ESL, and the shared time programs. And the funding for this is actually coming from an adult education grant through the state of Michigan that the program administrator has applied for and been given, has been granted, the grant, I always hate saying it like that, but has been granted the grant for this project. So we are recommending Schach Brothers for this, we're going to be planning to do this over the, during April, during that spring break time, when the staff in the office, as well as the students and the teaching staff, are on break.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
You're welcome.
Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Frank, to approve the purchase of carpet for shared time in adult education. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
And President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
That'll take us to item eight A, approval of teachers. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Frank.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and offer employment for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year for the, to the teachers listed on the attached document.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Bradford, and we'll hear from Mr. Archibald.
Yes, thank you, and good evening, Mr. Johnson. These individuals were interviewed along with other applicants for vacancies that existed in our instructional program. We believe that these teachers listed are most qualified for the positions indicated and recommend that these individuals be approved for employment. These positions are accounted for in the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board?
Congratulations.
Indeed. Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Bradford, for the approval of teachers. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Sorry, Mrs., I apologize. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mrs. Bradford, your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That takes us to item eight B, granting of tenure status to specified teachers. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mr. Centers.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District accept the recommendation of the superintendent and acknowledge that tenure status has been granted to the following teachers, affected on their respective dates. Larissa Burke, January thirteenth, two thousand twenty. Whitney Cable, January fifth, two thousand twenty. Lori Marsh, January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Center, supported by Mrs. Burton, and once again, Mr. Archibald.
Yes, thank you again. Just a reminder, as you know, tenure is awarded by the state, and the requirements to earn tenure include years of service and satisfactory performance as reflected on multiple annual year-end evaluations. We ask that the board acknowledge that tenure has been obtained by the teachers listed.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Center, supported by Mrs. Burton, for grant tenure status to the specified teachers. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Takes us to item eight C. This is resignations, and this is just for board information purposes. So we move on to item eight D, resolutions of appreciation for employees who are retiring. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for the services rendered by Frank Betzel, Mary Betzel, Carol Clune, Cynthia Scott, and Sharon S. Smith.
Support. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank, and again, Mr. Archibald.
Yes, thank you. It is with mixed emotions that we bring before you the names of five employees who will be retiring with a combined one hundred and twenty-three point four years of experience with Livonia Public Schools. I would like to offer my sincere congratulations and ask that the board adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation in recognition of their years of dedicated service to the students of Livonia Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Are there questions or comments from the board? Gee, just a few. Mrs. Oquist?
Well, certainly all of our LPS family members and staff are very, very important to us and have played a pivotal role. I would just like to ask for a point of privilege this evening to acknowledge Mrs. Cindy Scott, who is a member of our district cabinet team and who has been a tremendous colleague of mine for many, many years. I've had the privilege of knowing Cindy for well over twenty years and calling her a colleague and a friend. She has been a principal, a teacher in our district, a principal in our district, and now serves as the director of elementary programs and district services. Cindy is an individual with the highest level of integrity, care, compassion, and a work ethic that is truly unparalleled. She makes us all better by being part of our team. She was an integral part of many school communities, but especially at Garfield and CAS and Riley, and then said yes when we asked her to come over for what was supposed to be just a short stint here at central office, and graciously stayed on when she was appointed in her role as a member of our cabinet team. Cindy, and this resolution, I believe, has twenty-eight years of service with LPS, but has over forty-two years of service to children in the field of education. So we are thrilled for her and wish her and Gary and her family all the best. We adore you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
If we vote no, can you stay?
Point of parliamentary procedure, can we vote yes on some and no on others?
I don't see a problem.
President Johnson?
Mrs. Frank.
I just wanted to say, again, just echo, I couldn't say it any better than Mrs. Oquist, but I think that tonight's presentation was just a piece of what you do, and I think that our community doesn't know all the things that you do. And you do it seamlessly, and people don't realize all that you entail and all that your job entails. And so you are from two years old or eighteen months, they, is that what they said tonight, Jackson Center, eighteen months? Is that right? Eight weeks. Eight weeks. Eight weeks, up to sixth grade at Riley. And so all of our, all of our programs between those two ages, which is lots of years. And so there are lots of dynamics from lots of different age groups and lots of different things that are going on in child's development. So thank you for your leadership of that. That is a huge, a huge role that you play in our district. So I just wanted to thank you and thank you for all the dedication from, from that program tonight. It was just astounding. But not only do you do that program, but you do our K-four buildings and our five-six buildings. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Burton?
Many of us see you from a parent perspective, myself included, but in my time on the board also, I've come to learn what a role model and what an example you are for so many of our building administrators. It's wonderful for our building administrators to know that they have you to lean on because you have been in their role, you've done their job in our district for a really long time in a variety of buildings, and you've seen pretty much everything that can come across that desk. But you handle it with grace with both our parents and our staff and including our administrative team. Thank you so much. You're, you were.
Going to be missed.
Yeah, I'm just going to stop there.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Frank, to accept the resolutions of appreciation for employees who are retiring. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes, and President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. That takes us to item eight E, sympathy resolution. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached sympathy resolution for the family of Jennifer Cleaver. And if I may read the resolution.
Support.
Sympathy resolution, Jennifer Cleaver. Whereas the Board of Education was deeply saddened to hear of the untimely death of Jennifer Cleaver, and whereas she was a valued staff member of the Livonia Public Schools School District as a paraprofessional at Cleveland Elementary and as a classroom assistant in the Great Start Readiness Program at Garfield Community School, and whereas she consistently demonstrated her outstanding dedication, care, and commitment to students, parents, and colleagues, and whereas Jennifer Cleaver will always be remembered with great fondness and with a profound sense of gratitude for the immeasurable contributions she made to our school district. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District offers its deepest sympathy to the family, friends, and colleagues of Jennifer Cleaver.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. We have a second from Mrs. Bradford, and Mr. Archibald.
Yes, thank you. I would just like to again extend our condolences on behalf of the district. And while Mrs. Cleaver was with, only with us for a couple of years in the district in a formal capacity, it was shortly after the announcement of her death that we realized how much she has volunteered throughout our community, impacted many students and staff. And again, while she was only with us a short time in an official capacity, has certainly left an indelible mark on our district, and again, our condolences to her family.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. And Mrs. Oquist?
Thank you, President Johnson. I just want to share a few comments about Jen. I had the privilege of having her children at, well, at Hoover Elementary, and we send our love and prayers and certainly our deepest sympathy to her husband, Bill, and to her kids, Alex and Holly. And I just have to say, Jen was one of those people that would dive into anything with a smile, with a hearty laugh, and an energy and enthusiasm that you could only wish for to wake up with each day. She had such a tremendous energy around her and just such a, just such a great spirit. I had the opportunity to know her when I was a principal, and she was an amazing PTA member, parent volunteer. I knew her as a fellow hockey mom. And Jen was just one of those people who lit up a room and gave and gave and gave. So she is such a tremendous example, not only for her family, but for her colleagues, now that we have the good fortune of having her for just the past couple of years as a member of our, our staff family. And we will miss her greatly in many ways. And I just want to say thank you to her colleagues who are here tonight with us, and we know that she was very important to, to all of you as well. So thanks so much for spending time with us tonight and for, for staying through until her resolution was shared. I know that will mean a great deal to her family.
Thank you, Mrs. Oquist. Mrs. Bradford?
I too would like to extend my deepest condolences to Bill, Alex, and Holly. Jen was a dear friend of mine. So it'll be, it'll be fine, but she will be missed very much. And she did impact many students in the community and in the schools, and she, she's going to be truly missed. So my love and prayers to Bill, Alex, and Holly and the family.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradford.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford, to adopt the sympathy resolution for Jennifer Cleaver. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. That will take us to item nine, and nine A is the first reading of board bylaws. We have been working diligently on these, and I think I'll turn it over to Mrs. Oquist to walk us through. And these are going to be as a, as a group once we bring them up for a second reading.
Thank you, President Johnson. You are correct. We've spent time at the past two meetings, our study session and our committee of the whole meeting, reviewing the bylaws of the Board of Education. So initially, Policy Chair, Vice President Burton and I sat down and reviewed each of these bylaws. We took a look at our current practices and procedures, and we looked at our board practices and procedures as well and determined where changes needed to be made. I'll briefly highlight those on
changes needed to be made. I'll briefly highlight those on each of these policies. The first is regarding Board Operations Goals and Objectives, Bylaw BA. We indicated in the final paragraph that all employees are expected to adhere to the policies and administrative procedures. Previously, it had said carry out, and these are essentially bylaws of the board. We felt it was more appropriate to use the term adhere to rather than carry out. And then, the final sentence, "Students, parents, and stakeholders must abide by the policies and procedures that are applicable to them," was added. We also had a strike through of two short phrases in the second paragraph. On Bylaw B, would you like me to continue through each of them?
Let's, let's make sure that there aren't any...
Okay.
We'll do one by one. Any adjustments that...
No.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Thank you. Bylaw BAA is referring to goal-setting meetings, and this indicates that the Board of Education shall meet at least two times a year with the superintendent to review the goals and priorities of the school district. We normally do that in the summer months of either July or August to set the goals for that year for the school district, and then we follow up as part of my year-end evaluation that takes place normally in December or January, as we recently had, in which we review the goals and priorities of the district.
Any changes, corrections? Everybody good with the, the language? All righty, and to the next.
Bylaw BBA discusses the school board officers, and we went through that process this evening with regard to the Vice President, the President, and the Secretary, and that they are elected annually by the Board. Then, we added a sentence that came from a policy, let me see, prior policy BBABE, and it states, "The Treasurer of the school district shall not be a member of the Board of Education, but instead shall be an employee under contract with the Livonia Public Schools School District and shall be appointed annually by the Board of Education." That has been the case in our district since 1959.
Very good. Everybody good with the, the language?
Mm-hmm.
All righty, then we'll move on to the next policy.
Bylaws of the Board BBA. This is the method of electing board officers. So, initially, it's outlined that board members are elected annually, honored before the first regular board meeting in January, and shall serve for one year. And then, this policy goes on to delineate the process for filling any vacant position. And so, we simply added the word "regular" before the word "board meeting" because we do have other types of board meetings. And then, we added the sentence with regard to Treasurer that states, "The superintendent shall make a recommendation to the Board of Education as to the Finance Department employee who will assume the responsibilities of this position."
Everyone good with that language?
Yeah, we hope that doesn't happen.
Yeah. All right, we'll move on to, to the bylaw.
Bylaws of the Board BABA. The only thing we did was add the word "committee meetings" in the list of meetings at which the President shall preside.
All right. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, you have to be there, Mark.
I have to be there. All right, next bylaw.
Bylaw of the Board BABB. We did not change the lettering. We just stuck with the old lettering. The duties of the Vice President. It simply, I'll read the first sentence is where the change was made. "The Vice President shall act in the temporary absence of the President and perform other duties for the President when," and this is the new section, "requested by the President or authorized by the Board." So, we added the words "requested by the President."
Everyone good with that language?
Yes.
All right, we'll go on to the next bylaw.
Bylaw of the Board BABC, duties of the Board Secretary. So, just to delineate between the work of Mrs. Wozniak and the work of, in this case, Mrs. Bonnefield, we are referring in the duties to the Board Secretary. And so, we added the word "board" before "secretary" in two places, and we also did a strike through of duties which are not part of the assignment of the Board Secretary.
Everyone good with that language?
Mm-hmm.
All right, on to the next bylaw.
Bylaw of the Board BBE. As noted earlier, the first paragraph was incorporated into the bylaw we shared just a few moments ago. We also changed in the third paragraph that it shall be the responsibility of the Treasurer to have oversight of the monies of the district. Previously, it had stated the care and custody of all monies, and it also indicates that they will perform such duties as prescribed by the superintendent and the Board of Education in accordance with law.
Mrs. Bradford.
Just a quick question. The part that says "note" in red will not be included in the new bylaw. It will start with "it shall be the responsibility of the President," correct?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay.
Treasurer.
Or Treasurer.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? All righty, on to the next bylaw.
Bylaw BB, BB.
It's a good one.
It's a catchy title. This is regarding new board member orientation, and we did update the elements of this, and what I will share is primarily the focus is on ways to include newly-elected board members before they officially take a seat at the table. So, they are elected in November, and they began officially their capacity as of January 1st of the following year. So, Section 1 talks about the board member being expected to attend new board member orientation sessions through MASB and how tuition expenses would be paid for. It also indicates that the new board member is encouraged to attend all board meetings that are open to the public and also may be invited to attend additional board functions. We added, again, the word "board" in front of "member" and did some capitalization with regard to school district. And the fourth bullet indicates that the board member would be provided copies of or access to all publications and guides, guides we edit access to, because many of our documents are now electronic, and we share the access to them in that way. Finally, in the last two sections, we referred to what was previously deemed special problems or concerns to current topics, issues, or priorities of the Board. And then, finally, closed with clarifying that the duties stated with regard to that last paragraph would take place after assuming office, and it talks about getting up to date with members of the cabinet team, the superintendent and the Board with regard to the educational landscape of the state, instruction and study, and school finance. And then, it goes on to list the duties that were previously a part of this policy. We also updated the cross-reference to a, to a previously adopted policy.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwist.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions, comments? Seeing none. These will then all be brought on for a second reading at February's regular meeting to be voted on at that time. All right, then we're going to move on to item nine. Oops.
Nine B.
It's nine B. Yep, it'll get there. Nine B. All right, may I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Frank.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the evaluation of Superintendent Andrea Oakwist completing, completed by using the MASB evaluation tool for which she received a highly effective rating.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Centers, to approve the evaluation of Superintendent Oakwist. I have some thoughts, but I'm going to open it up to my colleagues first. Anyone want to make any comment? Mrs. Frank.
I'm not sure if you enjoyed it, Mrs. Oakwist, but it was a, it was really, it was like a state of the district last week when we were able to go over exactly what you have done and what your staff and team have done in our district over the past year. And as we talked about Cindy Scott in terms of the breadth and depth of what she does, the breadth and depth, I think, will amaze most people who, kids attend to school and most of our community members about what is going on in our community, in our schools, and, and, what you have a handle on in terms of this is where we need to grow, and this is where we are growing, and this is what we're doing fantastically. And so, I think just to be able to hear all of the things that we are doing in our district is, was, was a great opportunity for all of us. I think we, we know you do a fantastic job, but I think to hear each piece of that was such a, an inspiration to all of us to really do our best and learn and grow in these roles. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. I should note that this was a process that, that took hours to complete. It, it's very in-depth. We look at a lot of metrics in, in the evaluation. We follow the MASB guidelines for the evaluation. So, it is very in-depth, what we go through. Other questions or comments? Mrs. Bonnefield.
I'm sorry.
Mrs. Burton. Mrs. Bonnefield.
We are so very blessed to have you as our superintendent, and we do not take that lightly. Quality superintendents are, are very rare. It is an extremely difficult position. Not only do you need to be an expert in education, an expert in how to run the entire organization, but also an expert in how the legislative system works in Michigan, which people don't really realize is an important part of the whole job. Maybe 20 years ago or, or prior to 1993 anyway, it, it wasn't as significant, but, but now it is. You are masterful at that. You are also masterful at being so involved in our community, which is very important. It's, it's an important part of the job. I'm, I'm very grateful that you're here. I would encourage you also to, as, as we have encouraged you in the past, make sure you take the appropriate time off, be it at the end of the day, before 10 o'clock PM, and, and at other times, so, so that you have the energy to continue doing the job, because number one, we're concerned that, that you treat yourself well, but also selfishly, we would like to keep you around for a very long time. But thank you so much for, for all that you give to our school district. Whenever we're out and around in the school district, everyone knows who you are, and everyone is amazed at the depth at which you care individually for them. I've had people who have said to me, "Oh, my gosh, Mrs. Oakwist was here, and she knew my name," or "She recognized that I got a haircut," or "She asked about my, my son and his, and his class," and, and so forth. But the fact that you, and that you know our employees, our team, our district, we are a huge district, but the fact that you know and care about our entire LPS family is so very evident, and it is one of the things that makes LPS a very dear place for us to, to entrust those most dear to us, our children. So, thank you for everything you do for our district. I could go on and on, but I will stop there.
Mrs. Bradford.
Well, I could go on and on too, but Colleen said it so well. We have, one of our jobs as board members is to evaluate the superintendent, and it is a great time of the year to really look at what's going on in the district and all that is happening and all that Mrs. Oakwist does on a daily basis. I can't believe how many committees outside of the district. It's amazing to look at the resume of, of all of her duties and things that she, different boards and, and that she's assigned to, and it's amazing. And not only do you do the great work of the district, but you put yourself out there into the community and with the state, and you're so highly regarded in that capacity. We have a real gem in our district, having Mrs. Oakwist as our superintendent, and we're just thankful that we are all able to work together to make the district a better, better place. But she certainly makes it great every day. So, thank you for all you do.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you, Mrs. Bradford. Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. Our public, our public community and the parents and our staff might be surprised to learn that the Board of Education has one employee. Some people think we have, you know, a thousand. We have one, one employee, and it's the superintendent. So, we do take the evaluation of our superintendent very seriously, and we are so thrilled and so pleased to have you. The community might not also realize how long you've been involved in Livonia Public Schools. You started when you were five. So, we have another alumna. And the other thing that people might not realize is how much you have done. One of the reasons that our Livonia Public Schools community has so much respect for you is because you have respect for them, and you have respect for them because you know what they're doing and what their jobs are. And you know what their jobs are because you have done so many of them. You started in high school sweeping floors and helping out with the janitorial and custodial duties, and our custodial teams recognize that and respect you for it. You have been a teacher. You have been a principal. You have served on cabinet, and all the people in those capacities recognize that and respect you for it. We're still working on that commercial driver's license. I think that's the only job you haven't done yet, but just stick around in this one for a while. When you first came on board as superintendent, as an interim superintendent, you told us you didn't want the job. Thank you for changing your mind.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, Mrs. Jarvis. Mr. Centers.
So, I don't want to be left out of the fun, but no, this is, you had some very big shoes to fill coming into our district where you had a Regional Superintendent of the Year, a long legacy of success. And, you know, it was amazing to me that it didn't take very long at all for you to step into the role, assume that, that stature of leadership, and just really kind of put your, your own emphasis on the job and crafted a team that's really in your vision. So, you've done a really great job. Very proud of everything you've done for the district, your team you've built, and the stuff they do, and just our district on a, on a daily basis. So, you know, again, this is a, a great day where we can, not every district gets to celebrate their, their superintendent's valuation, but we do every year. So, thank you for all your hard work.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
So, I, I know that we've done a lot of back patting today and lots of hearts and flowers, but I, I think it's the leadership and the ability for everyone to come together and tackle all this stuff and, and make sure that everything is where it needs to be. It's a tough job, and we always give out lots of kudos, and, and, and we do appreciate you beyond measure. But it, it's, it's not, it's not an easy job. There's really tough choices that need to be made. There are long, long hours. There's some scary stuff that happens, and you always come through with grace. And I think part of the reason why we are such a high-functioning group is because of the leaderships that, that you provide, the example that you provide, and it, it makes the, the job for us much easier. We can all work hard and, and get the answers that we need. I know that, you know, tonight, the staff, before we leave, the staff is probably going to have some phone calls to make, or at least tomorrow morning when they walk in. You know, there's always something, you know, that has to happen. You know, we, we learn things at the meetings and we talk, and we're on it. We're just not, we don't rest on our laurels. Every day is a new challenge, and we can always be better. I don't think that we ever take one day for granted, and as much as, you know, we are, you know, rate you very highly and as highly effective, that's not to say that everything is perfect and there's no room for improvement. There's always, no matter how great things are, there's always room for improvement, and we're always striving to be better, holding each other accountable, and, and really doing what we can to change the lives of a lot of people in the district, and that starts with your leadership.
Thank you, Mrs. Bonnefield. I have a, a little bit of a more unique perspective because, and Colleen knows this well, because I have the opportunity to spend more time with, with Andrea than most of the board members. So, this is, is more from a, a personal observation and point of view, and I'm, I'm always amazed... And I'm, I'm always amazed at the depth and breadth of your knowledge of the district. I mean, it is, it doesn't seem to me anything you don't know. If, if there are things, you hide it well. We, we meet every week. And I think, you know, I start out the meetings by talking about respect. And I think that's one of the, the real attributes that you have, is you respect everyone that you come in contact with. And I think everyone who comes in contact with you has respect for you. I think through that, you have been able to put together an unbelievable cabinet, an unbelievable staff. And I look at this as a, a team. It's not just us eight. It's all of us. And I think it's a, a real tribute to you that you've been able to, to put that group together. And certainly from my standpoint, I appreciate it. So thank you.
May I speak?
No.
No. You had your say at your evaluation.
Well, I, I, I'm humbled and, you know, just gratified for all the things that you've shared and for the time that you spent last week. We really did delve into so many things. And like Mrs. Bonnefield said, we found areas where we want to continue to grow and improve. And as, as, as so many positive things that we had to share, we also took a deep look at things that we want to continue to do better on behalf of the students that we serve and the staff that we serve each day. We have a lot of people counting on us. And I could never do this job without the people to my right. So our cabinet team is phenomenal, as you know that. We, I felt like we shared as much of their work in that evaluation meeting as we did mine. They are a tremendous group who, not only do I enjoy working with very, very much, and they love Tuesday mornings when we meet as a cabinet team. But their wisdom and their passion for the work that we do is unbelievable. And the synergy that we have together. And I want to certainly thank the wonderful lady to my right, Mrs. Wozniak, who is our amazing executive assistant, not only for, for the superintendent, but for our entire board team. You could never imagine the work that she does behind the scenes. I know you have a little taste of it, but I get the privilege of seeing that every day. And she is my partner in crime and we have a lot of fun. And we do a lot of work, but we love doing it. And I'm especially grateful to have a board team to work with where we have grown together and learned together. And I think we benefit from the fact that we have such joy and passion for this district. There is nowhere I'd rather be, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwist. Okay, have the tears all been shed?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mr. Centers, to approve the evaluation of the superintendent, Mrs. Oakwist. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
I would love to take the role. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield gives an enthusiastic yes, and President Johnson?
Yes.
All right.
That motion carries. Thank you again. Now we will go to our last item, our hearing from board members. And as has become customary, I will open the floor to anyone who has comments. I guess we just can't.
We set them off.
We have, yeah.
It was a very good night. Therefore, we've come to the end of the agenda. And if there is no more business to be brought before the board, then we are adjourned. Thank you.